Hello.
Hello.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Oh, sorry.
Can you hear me, Irene?
I can hear you.
All right, am I on the right one?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember or Vice Mayor Turner, how are you?
I'm doing well, thank you, Chief. How are you doing?
I'm doing good, sir. How's the baby?
Oh, she remains blissfully ignorant to the world's problems, man.
Lucky her.
Yeah. She's about seven months now, so she's got all kinds of personality. She's fun.
Nice, very, very nice.
By the way, Vice Mayor, I really like the background.
You're on mute, Vice Mayor.
Oh, yeah. I tried to do a background, but it recognizes the face behind me. And so even if it comes through a lot of the time.
I think that's great.
It's the only place I could hide from the house that Chaos built.
Do you need the link again? Okay. I see you. I'm sorry, I thought I took that off.
Be just a couple of minutes. Okay.
Okay.
David.
David.
You okay?
You okay?
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. Irene, you ready to go?
Yes, I am, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Let's have a fore and after the closed session.
Mayor, there was no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order if everyone would mind me. Thank you. Irene, maybe we have a roll call, please.
Yes. Councilmember Bagby.
Aye, here, present.
Councilmember Brigham. Thank you. Yeah. Councilmember Cruz.
Present.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Turner.
Present.
And Mayor Walter.
Yeah. Next is a conflict of interest. Anyone on the city council that has a conflict of interest with the agenda this evening? Okay, seeing no one. Agenda review. Okay, no changes to the agenda. How about some public comment? I'm gonna open it up to folks that are here at the Performing Arts Center first. So anyone wishing to step up to the podium and share with us your thoughts on items that are not on the agenda this evening may do so. Seeing no one. Irene, is there anyone in the virtual world that would like to share with us?
There are currently no hands raised.
Okay. And you'll let me know if the hands do raise anytime. I'd like to take their comments as well.
Of course.
Okay, with that being said, the first item is a proclamation in presentations. And the first is a proclamation proclaiming May 15th, 2020, as Peace Officer Memorial Day. And David, did you have a proclamation that you'd like to share with us?
Definitely, here. Okay, I'm gonna read a proclamation in the city council. This proclamation is to recognize Police Week and Police Officer Memorial Day. And I want to recognize that we have three officers joining us in the audience tonight, including Sergeant Borso, Officer Nunez, as well as Officer Camara, if I'm recognizing everybody with their masks on. The proclamation states the following: Whereas law enforcement officers play an essential role in ensuring our safety and in safeguarding our rights and freedoms. And whereas our officers partner with citizens to keep our community as safe as possible by enforcing traffic laws, proactive policing, informing neighborhood watch groups. And whereas when an unsafe situation does arise, officers are the first to respond and provide assistance, often at great risk to their own personal safety. Thank you for that. And whereas Cloverdale police officers continue to face increased danger, both seen and unseen, and scrutiny in the performance of their official duties. And whereas our officers recognize their duty to serve our citizens by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception, and the weak against oppression. And whereas City of Cloverdale police officers respond to calls for service provided needs, security, and participate in numerous community events. And whereas the Congress and President of the United States have established May 15th, 2020, as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which it falls as National Police Week. Now therefore be resolved that Mayor Gus Walter of the City of Cloverdale proclaims May 15th, 2020, as Police Officers Memorial Day, and the week of May 10th through May 16th, as Police Week in the City of Cloverdale, and urges all citizens to mark this occasion with appropriate ceremonies commemorating police officers past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion have collectively preserved our rights and our security, and further extend our appreciation to our Police Chief Jason Ferguson and his staff. And I want to recognize Police Lieutenant Christopher Parker, Police Sergeant Salvatore Berusto, Police Sergeant Rudy Segubiano, Police Officers Kevin Burke, John Camara, Damian Eelsfield, Beau Gastineau, and Jason Mora, as well as Officers Carlos Nunez, Ricky Rhodes, Jim Stratton, and Katie Binoni, and finally, Police Officer Reserve Carlos Pugino, presented this day, May 27th, by our Mayor, Mayor Walter.
David, thank you. And, you know, this is Police Officer Week from the 10th to the 16th, but really it's 52 weeks a year. You know, we really do appreciate, I know the city council appreciates all the hard work you do. These times are so difficult with everybody having rights and rules and things changing every five minutes. But thank you very much for your, for your service. Councilmembers, if you'd like to add anything, just raise your hands. Chief Ferguson, thank you as well. And I know the force is just excited to have you here, and at least that's what they tell me, so, but thank you. Okay, seeing no councilmembers, let's move on to the...
Oh, I did that recently.
Councilmember Bagby?
Oh, yeah, I think the Vice Mayor might have piped up first, so.
Oh, that's okay. Go right ahead. Wait, my turn.
I just, I just think that it's fortuitous that this week it has fallen now because I think that they've... We have so much to be grateful for, for our police force. And they've really shown what they're made of during this COVID crisis, and they've just gone above and beyond the call. And, I mean, Gus is right, is that every week is Honor Your Police Officers Week. So I just want to thank them for, you know, keeping us safe and congratulate them for keeping themselves safe during this time. I think that that's, shows their discipline and their training, their dedication. And I just really want to thank them for being out on the front lines, you know, right now. During this time, I think that they've just done a fantastic job. So thank you so much for serving the community how you have been. And it's just, it can't, I just can't put it into words how proud I am, and I know other councilmembers are of, of our police department, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Turner?
Yeah, thank you. So I'll keep it brief as I can, but I really just want to express how, how proud I am of our, of our police department and their resiliency throughout change. It, it's in our memory that they lost their former, former Police Chief to a battle with cancer and, you know, had an interim. And Chief Ferguson, who joined the department and really just kind of providing that leadership. Their, their resiliency to change and their ability to continue to be a community-based police department, I think goes beyond any words that I could think of. You know, I kind of share Melanie's feelings where it's, it's hard to put the words together when you want to convey how proud you are of a particular department and what they've been able to accomplish for our community. And your officers and your leadership team, they come out, support first, educate, and if it's absolutely necessary, they, they take the steps that they need to. And, and to me, that really just spells the, the small town and the vibe that we're open for here. And, and I really just take my, my figure of the hat off because I don't have one. Top-notch group. Thank you for everything that you guys do.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I was on mute, but once again, thank you, thank you for your service. I, I don't see a student liaison. So Marta, do you see one of our student liaisons anywhere? Okay, well then we'll skip, needless to say, we'll skip the student liaison report. Consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar will be considered together by one action of the city council, unless a council member or a member of the public wishes to have an item pulled and discussed separately. Would anyone like any item on the consent calendar pulled and discussed separately? I see no councilmembers wishing to do so, and Irene, anything from the public?
No, not at this time.
Okay, then I'll entertain a, a motion for approval of the consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the item.
I'll second.
Okay. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Turner.
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby.
Aye.
Councilmember Brigham.
Aye.
And Mayor Walter.
Aye.
Yeah.
Okay, next is Communications. David, is there anything? Okay, new business, item number seven. Resolution of the City of Cloverdale, making determinations for the Safe and Sane Fireworks for 2020. So David, is this your report?
Yes, Mayor, happy to present a general report for the council's consideration. The item before you tonight is a resolution of the City of Cloverdale making determinations that conditions exist which necessitate the prohibition of the sale and discharge of Safe and Sane fireworks for, for the year 2020. I want to just make a point of this, that, that I know there's been community, considerable community conversation around this, this, this issue and item. And the focus really has been on the sale of Safe and Sane. It's not about the fireworks display, the larger fireworks display that has been part of the annual tradition in Cloverdale for a long time. So this really just focused in on this resolution, just to just focuses specifically on the sale and discharge of Safe and Sane. With that said, this, this item was brought before the council on, on May 13th for a consideration of an urgency ordinance. At the time, staff did provide an overview and background of how this matter got brought forward to council, and I'll, I'll touch on that just briefly. I think originally this item came about because there was concern expressed by members of the community about, around the issue of sale of Safe and Sane fireworks related to potential fire concerns. And that was, you know, as a result of that request, it was referred to the Police Administration and Finance Subcommittee for, for review. And, and, and as part of the review by that subcommittee, there was a, a number of opinions expressed on, on, on both sides of that issue, whether it was a support for a, you know, a permanent ban, a support for a ban in a particular year, and, and including also some consideration around maybe the larger fireworks show, maybe change the date to a time when maybe there's less concern about fire. So that issue was discussed, ultimately it came back to council. Council recommended that an ad hoc be established because there was quite a bit of community input, and it was obviously going to be difficult and challenging to corner all that input at a subcommittee level when there's a lot of city business to perform. Obviously, following the appointment of the fireworks ad hoc committee, the city, city staff was tasked with addressing, and maybe, maybe task isn't right word, required to address a number of emergency events that we experienced here in the City of Cloverdale, you know, really starting with some of those public safety power shut-off events that occurred in 2019, you know, followed very closely by the King Kate Fire, which, you know, kind of drew out the amount of time it took to, to address and respond to those, including kicking off a resiliency effort, which kind of puts the ad hoc committee at stake. Some early spring, there was again another request before the city council to consider a ban on the sale of Safe and Sane fireworks. And then again, it was referred back to the Finance and Subcommittee. The recommendation of the subcommittee was to consider a moratorium in the current fiscal year. I think the concerns that were expressed was relative to the drought conditions and the dry conditions that were experiencing this year due to a lack of normal precipitation. We're at now about 50% of normal, and reports are that we're going to enter fire season about a month earlier than we normally do. So it looks like fire season is going to probably start as early as July this year. Likewise, in February and to, in March, we became subject to the current pandemic that we're addressing and the coronavirus. And it's part of that, the county health officer issued a shelter in place order and implemented a physical distancing requirement to help minimize the spread of virus. And so I think that the conditions were such that this year that the Finance Subcommittee, the subcommittee recommended and is provided for in the Cloverdale Minutes Code and is to prohibit the sale and discharge of Safe and Sane because conditions exist in the city this year. And some of the events that are specifically identified in the ordinance include a fire weather event, stormwater, drought, limitation from firefighting forces, and other conditions that may present a danger to the health and safety and the life and property of our residents. I think it was based on the concern for the life and health and safety of our community that originally the urgency ordinance and now the resolution was brought before you. Staff is aware that there's been considerable interest by the community expressed in the desire to have a, a larger fireworks display. And just again, to reiterate, that wasn't something that was part of this discussion, specifically in terms of the sale of Safe and Sane. That's really a, a larger discussion that wasn't a subject of this, this particular proposed moratorium. Staff has proposed a, a number of options for council's consideration. Obviously, based on the conditions that exist, staff, you know, did recommend in the agenda report that you consider the resolution. But some of the options include modifying the resolution to address some of the public comments. Likewise, council can, can reject the resolution. And one of our staff's recommendations is that if, if, if the council recommends rejecting the resolution, that you do consider that any fireworks sale or public, be, public displays be required to submit and provide a public safety and health protection plan. And really, that's just guided in kind of best management practices to ensure that our community remains fire safe and addresses any concerns around the issue of, of coronavirus. And I know some of the fireworks folks have submitted a proposed plan that would address the sale, and that would go a long way in terms of addressing, you know, some of the health protection plan measures that are recommended as part of this option should council decide to reject the resolution. Obviously, the other alternative is to provide a definitive direction to staff where we can follow up and work with the community to address whatever direction the council recommends. With that said, Mayor, that, that really concludes our staff's report. We're happy to entertain any questions or comments that, that the council may have about this item.
Thank you, David. I'm going to take the liberty as being the, the mayor of the city, just to kind of make a comment here first. We did direct staff to bring this item back for reconsideration. And David's absolutely right, we received a tremendous amount of feedback from the residents of Cloverdale supporting the, the Safe and Sane fireworks. And I've also learned, as most of you have, that the Lions is gonna do a display this year. I believe they have permission to do it in the, the baseball field behind, behind the high school. Also, Dennis from TNT has provided materials that will be passed out with the sale of every sane and sane, Safe and Sane fireworks that will give proper protocol for distancing. So I guess my question to the, to the city council is, do you want to continue entertaining this item? Or would you rather wait and do it a little later in the year? What's the pleasure of the council at this point?
I, I can go first, Mayor, if you'd like.
Please.
So I, I just want to kind of say briefly that I made an argument for my position at our last meeting. That was with the pretense that there was no secondary opportunity to, to speak on this item. And therefore, I just want to communicate that my position has not changed. I do believe that we can work with the key stakeholders and, and find a, a way forward. And I'd like to see us move in that direction.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry. Councilmember Brigham?
Yeah, I'm, I'm the same as Jason. I, I do think that we can work it out. And I'd like to just vote on this thing tonight. And we've gone over this before. Everybody knows how I feel about it, so that's enough.
Thank you. Councilmembers, if there's, Councilmember Cruz?
Yes. I am of the opinion that this ordinance that we have in front of us is very old, very dated. It needs a lot of revision. And people, it's Cloverdale, the majority of people don't even know that this was written in 2008, and it was under a council that I believe you and Mary Ann, Mr. Mayor, were part of, signed by Mayor Paula. And this is why it's brought about to be voted on. It's not that we chose or that the staff chose to go ahead and vote on this with any kind of background other than what people are misconstruing as saying that it's just that some of us are totally against fireworks. And that is not true. I grew up enjoying fireworks all my life in my hometown, and I do like them. However, I am of the opinion that maybe we should have fireworks in December instead of the Fourth of July because of the conditions that we have with the weather and because of the COVID. Now that we have started testing in, in Cloverdale, we have a new profile of the community and COVID. More than 200 tests have been conducted, and we are awaiting for results. I'm hoping that they are all negative, but we've had 200 tests because some people have been positive in Cloverdale. Of course, I don't know who, I don't know where, because that's Sonoma County Health Department information, and it's protected by law because of, help me here, Jose, what's the?
PHI, Personal Health Information.
What is it called in, with the acronym? What's the acronym? HIPAA. With HIPAA. So I just want you to keep that in perspective. I'm not against the fireworks. I just feel that COVID is the reality. There's no control of it yet. The county has increased in the last couple of weeks. We need to be very aware of that. And at the same time, we are almost in a drought. So I'm just thinking of the safety of the of the community. I really suggest that perhaps we celebrate it in December. You know, patriotism does not equate to fireworks. It's a beautiful celebration. And I was able to watch those in aircraft carriers. That many here in Cloverdale haven't had that opportunity. And I'm very lucky to have been able to enjoy that. So I believe we can celebrate the Fourth of July with other fireworks, given the reality of the area. And but if that's what people want, go ahead. But I think we need to be judicious, and we need to be able to separate situations as they are. Firework display, safe and sane sales, health conditions, public health conditions, and weather. It's not all merged into one thing. We have four different issues to address here. And at the same time, I believe I'm not against the Lions Club. I'm not hurting the Lions Club as it's been accused of. I am in support of Lions Club as I always been. But we need to be judicious, and we need to be responsible. If, and some of the issues have nothing to do with us. We have no control of the weather. We have no control of the public health condition that we are experiencing in Sonoma County and in Cloverdale. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cruz. Councilmember Bagby?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'm grateful for the opportunity to kind of set the record straight a bit. I think, you know, it's really important to remember what we're talking about here. And this is a one-year moratorium on the sale of personal fireworks. Because, as stated by our ordinance, that the city manager read earlier, and I'll just read it again, the city council may give in any given fireworks sales year, prohibit the sale and discharge of safe and sane fireworks upon determining that conditions exist in this city that may include, but are not limited to, fire weather events, fuel moisture, drought, limitations on available firefighting forces, and/or other conditions that the city council finds create an extreme danger to the public health and safety and/or life and property of the residents, businesses, and visitors of the city. In two previous meetings, the chief of police supported this item. I'm finding myself in a position where I think my other council members are not going to support the position of the chief of police, which I just find shocking. Because they have been sacrificing and keeping us safe for months under very difficult decision, very difficult circumstances. We just recognize them for this. And the buck stops here. This is, you know, fireworks are not a right. They are a privilege. And the privilege in deciding what the circumstances are where they're safe, it resides with this council. And we should be able to make this decision reasonably. I just, you know, want to remind folks as well that, you know, on July 24th of last year, at the Police, Admin, and Finance Subcommittee, it was members of the community that brought their concerns to the subcommittee. There were folks who live in the in the city limits and the wildland urban interface. And they were, you know, after local fires, really concerned about fire danger that fireworks posed. And I also disagree with the characterization that there are two sides to this, because it's a false dichotomy. The fact is, is that there were people in that room. Some of them did not want, were concerned about safe and sane fireworks. So fireworks sales for personal use. Some of them were concerned about city, and it's not a city display. The city of Cloverdale does not run the public fireworks display. That's done by the local service organization. That's another, you know, misconception that's out there. They were, some folks were concerned about the public display. Every one of those folks mentioned that they're aware that it's a big fundraiser and came with ideas to help transition off of fireworks sales. And they were met with a lot of resistance as, as folks have been, you know, in the last, you know, over a decade that that we've been dealing with this. But, you know, there aren't just, aren't just two sides to this. There are multiple opinions on this. And I think that people, people's opinions need to be heard. So, you know, when the mayor brought this item for the one-year moratorium to the Police, Finance, and Admin Subcommittee, the two of us voted to bring it forward to the council, thinking that the conditions do occur right now, where public safety and public health could be at risk. And why not just cool it for a year? I thought that was a reasonable request. So I support that one-year moratorium so that we can kind of regroup and figure out how we move forward. Also, continue talking with the service groups to figure out, you know, even though we're going to have a very difficult budget year, what are some ways that we can help out to transition them off of fireworks sales in the future? Because honestly, I don't think they're realistically are going to be around much longer. I think that at the state level, there's going to be some movement there. And they're not going to be able to depend on that source of revenue for so much of the good work that they do in this community and other communities throughout California. So I think that, you know, however the vote goes tonight, for the one-year moratorium, I think we need to continue to have an open conversation and continuing to engage the public on what it is that they want to see. But I don't think that we should shut down conversations about this. I think that we need to actually reach out and engage more with the community on this subject.
Councilmember Bagby, I agree with you. I think we need to have open dialogue in the future about this again. Reenact that subcommittee or the ad hoc committee that we had set up with yourself and Councilmember Cruz to have a discussion. We're talking about this year. And some things have come to light that have changed my mind. And but before I give my opinion, I'd like to hear from the public. There's a few people here. There's one, two, there's three, four folks here at the CPAC that I want to give the opportunity to come up and say things on this topic. So if anyone would like to address us, the city council on this item, please step up to the podium and give us your name and share with us what you have to say.
Hello, my name is Justin Galloway. I'm in Cloverdale, also a member of the Lions Club. I wanted to come down.
Irene, can you unmute that mic, please?
Okay.
Good. Again, my name is Justin Galloway, member of the Lions Club, resident of Cloverdale. And I believe this year specifically, it is vital that we try to hold on to some initiatives. One of them is being the ability for us as individuals to be able to go to one of the booths in town, purchase the safe and sane fireworks that are designed to be used safely, as long as we're responsible in using those with all the safety precautions that they clearly state while we're purchasing and on the attraction with them, using those same safety protocols. We can responsibly have our own displays at our own houses, maintaining social distancing, if we're given that opportunity to prove to you, the council, that we, if you can entrust in us that we can do this responsible, responsibly, we as a community can prove to you that we can do this even when there are weather conditions, even when there are other underlying safety issues, that as long as we, if given the opportunity, we can do this safely. We can have these small displays with our own families in our own driveways and maintain a little bit of normalcy through a summer that has been anything but normal. It allows our little kids at home who look forward to stuff like this, who've had their lives turned upside down, it allows them an opportunity to experience something that's what they're more accustomed to. Sure, they won't be doing it with their friends. They won't be doing with their families like they're used to. But it gives them something to do, something to look forward to. And all the while doing it, doing this safely. I also think this actually is a way we can turn something into a positive. Because there's, we don't know how long the shelter in place is going to last. By each individual family having the opportunity to do this on their own, would actually encourage more families to go purchase their own displays from one of the booths in town, and should actually help out increasing sales, which are, go directly back to the very community that they're supporting. By eliminating the large get togethers that typically happen on the Fourth of July with friends and neighbors coming together, this will encourage more individuals to go out and get their own displays. So we can take something that for most people's consideration is a negative, which is all that, all that is going on right now, and take some little, put some little positive in that. And again, it just comes down to, will the people of Cloverdale, if given the opportunity to purchase and use their own fireworks at their house, can they do it safely? I think, based on past experiences, it has been done safely year in, year out. I don't see anything that we've done in the past as a community that would lead us to think that we couldn't do that once again this year. Especially with the extra emphasis on using them safely to prevent any fire damage or any fire hazard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from CPAC that would like to say something?
Temple Smith on Clark Ave, Cloverdale. Mayor Order, Councilmembers Dragan, Bagby, Cruz, and Turner, and Manager Kelly, and Chief Park.
You could just speak up a little louder.
I can get down here. First of all, I was told years ago before I was a Lion, they tried selling fireworks on New Year's Eve, couldn't give them away. We sent them back. And the fireworks sales are directly connected to the display. That's how we pay for it. You know, and everything I point out, this is a veteran of former holding fundraiser. And I can't remember July 4th, it wasn't dry. I understand we're going to back and forth with the weather, but it's summer, you know. The people of Cloverdale have a very good track record with safe and sane fireworks. So it can probably matter from illegal ones. I had a fire behind my house and it was a mortar. But for people to buy the fireworks and have them at home, it's not an opportunity to teach your children about safety, responsibility, and obeying the law. And one day I was saying on Clark Ave, I grew up in Santa Rosa, it wasn't like this. You go on Clark Ave the day after the Fourth of July, and there isn't a single burned up firework lane in the street or on the sidewalk. And as I move around, I see people have buckets of water to throw them into, a hose right there, you know. And I mean, I think that was it.
Anyone else?
Thank you. My name is Jerry Spitzer. I am with the Cloverdale Lions Club. I would like to say that I've been in Cloverdale for 21 years. And my understanding is there's never been a fire caused by the safe and sane fireworks. I know that the fire seasons have been creeping up on us. In the 21 years, though, there must have been more than a drought now this year or a couple of years ago. And we made it through the safe and sane selling of the safe and sane fireworks. I'm going to point out a couple of things here that the Cloverdale Lions Club do with the money that they, they collect from the safe and sane fireworks sale. About 30% of our, our income comes from the safe and sane. Going back to 2016, we donated over $40,000 to different organizations, Cloverdale Little League, Ponytail Basketball, High School Football, Cloverdale Soccer, Cloverdale Baseball was, our donations there were over $4,000. Our signature program is the Chargers Football. In 2016, we donated over $14,000 to this program to keep the kids going, the little kids from, I don't know, I think we start at seven and go up to 11 or 12. Moving along, on project, and we also donated $1,000 to Project Grad that year. In 2017, we donated again to the Little League, Ponytail Girls Softball, eighth grade basketball, we donated $2,000 to keep the Chargers Football going again. With, including the cheerleaders, we donated almost $17,000 to keep that program going, keep the little kids off of the streets, give them something to do after school to practice, play on Sunday. The fireworks display that year cost us, what we call the Pyro Spectacular, cost $8,000. We donated $600 to Grad Night. Oh, boy, just looking at some of the other things, donating to some individuals, Martha Taylor, I don't know if any of you know her, Johnny Valera, I don't know if any of you know Johnny, passed away, Jordan Jackson, we gave over $14,000 to help these people along.
Bringing yourself to the venue sheet.
Real quick, real quick. I just wanted to say that, like I said, about 30% of our money comes from this sale. And to lose this, to have a spaghetti dinner or something like that is not going to bring this money in. So if we lose this, it's going to be a real hurt for the Cloverdale Lions Club. Thank you, council.
Thank you. Anyone else before I move into the virtual comments? Yes, Mayor?
Good evening, City Council. My name is Christina Lepa Duarte. And I want to, I made it a point to be here because it's very important to come and speak on behalf of the community. I can't imagine the position that you guys are in, having to make a very tough decision. I, my heart goes out. But I've also been very involved with the community. And I feel that it is very important to listen to your constituents. I know just on the Facebook community page alone, there has been a lot of conversations on this, this very subject. I also want to attest that I have seen firsthand what the Lions Club does for Cloverdale and our community. I also see how our businesses struggle. And our fundraising efforts are also very, very hard in this community. When you have a small community and you're going after the same, asking for donations from the same organization. from the same organizations and people, it gets very taxing. And so now we have this, we have coronavirus, COVID-19, that has literally hijacked our economy, not just Cloverdale's, but our whole nation's economy. And so I stand here because I say, we have the power here as a small community to really, truly make a difference, to listen to the community, to take everybody's position and actually give it some weight. But more than anything, what I think that we need, and I say this and I stress it, is to come together, find ways and invest on ways to come together. Because I have seen a lot of division, and that's not healthy. And so we have, you guys have that power today to truly make that difference and to listen. And instead of taking something away, why not try modifying it? Because it's the same concept. When somebody's trying to get clean, you don't just pull the plug, you do it gradually. So I think it's, I wanna say thank you, I respect that you guys are giving us, the community, the opportunity to speak up and to have a seat at this table. And I really, truly hope that you take what we have to say to consideration, because it means something. And it takes a lot of courage to come up here and to speak, so thank you.
And we thank you for finding the courage to come up and share with us your thoughts. It's very important. Irene, is there anyone else on the internet that would like to share with us?
Please unmute David.
21 written comments, some of those included multiple signatures by members of our community. What Irene has posted is the name of those written comments. Generally speaking, this are all in support of maintaining or continuing to allow for the sale of safe and sane fireworks in, in our community. So I just wanted to acknowledge and recognize that we did receive communication, every effort was made to catalog and document.
David, you need to unmute, David, unmute.
You get it?
Just, just to recognize all, all of the, uh, community members that did take the time to write and express themselves to, to the council. We did receive a significant amount of, uh, written correspondence relative to this matter. So just wanted to make sure council is aware of that.
Thank you, David.
I do have one member, Shirley Davis. Mrs. Davis.
Council members, your first, your first person who responded to this said that they feel that everything can be done responsibly. And where I live, I've called the police department twice and because fireworks were being fired over the rooftops and up into the, we have a lot of dry grass and everything. And you probably have heard this before, uh, it's been on the news, the comment of make your decisions smartly. And that's where I'm coming from. I think with the idea of the dry grass, the potential of a fire hazard, we can't make a decision based on emotions and based on dollars. It has to be done, something with consideration for safety for everybody. The Lions Club, I know they do a lot in the community and they depend on this money, but there are other communities that have, um, have done away with the fireworks that have Lions Clubs. Maybe they should reach out to them, think outside the box and think of other ways that they can earn their money. Let's see. And that's another question I have is, what else can the Lions Club do to get the money that they need for all these services? Again, thinking outside the box and, and possibly doing some other events in the community. But I really strongly stress that safety has to be considered before money. Uh, we have this in our politics today and a lot of people are feeling that pressure. And I know that your decision is not gonna be easy either, but again, I emphasize the safety of our community versus what a club takes in for money. Thank you.
Thank you, Shirley. Irene, is there anyone else?
Thank you, Mayor. Currently, there are no other hands raised on this item.
Thank you. Okay, I'd like, I'm sorry for the echo, folks. Okay, I'd like to bring it back to the council. Uh, let me just kind of weigh in on this a little bit. You know, at the last city council meeting, I voted to not support for 2020, uh, the fireworks display, which at the time we, we thought wasn't happening anyhow, or the sale of safe and sane. Uh, since then, I quite frankly changed my mind. Um, the, um, I, I've, I've talked with TNT and they will be providing, uh, the sellers of their product with handouts, one on how to use the safe and sane fireworks safely and what's the proper distancing. And that came from Dennis, and I think that's on the website, is it not, David? Yes, yeah. So, um, you, you know, that, that gives me comfort. Also, I think it's really important that we get the ad hoc committee back together again. And, and, and I don't know when that time is, I think the, the committee has to decide that, but we've got to bring this issue to the forefront and make some type of a decision on it, or possibly put it on the valid initiative. Of course, I'd hate to do that if Councilmember Bagby is correct, when she says that Sacramento may be looking at this from a statewide issue. So we'll have to see what happens there. I, I also think, and I surely hope that Cloverdallians use common sense, um, when it comes to igniting their fireworks. I, I think people are gonna be staying close to home, uh, because of the virus that's out there. And Councilmember Cruz, I know you were kind enough to point out to me that Cloverdale has COVID-19 in the community, you're absolutely right. And quite frankly, I hope those people stay home. They shouldn't be out, they should be self-quarantined. Uh, and if they don't have the wherewithal to do that in their home, they can surely go to the counties, uh, which is, David, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, Sonoma State has a shelter in place facility there.
The county takes care of those people.
Sonoma State does have a, a, a non-congregate center for folks that are COVID. You, you do have to arrange through your healthcare provider to, to get accommodations.
And that's also open to the city of Cloverdale residents? Yes. So, uh, Councilmember Cruz, yes, anybody from Cloverdale could do that. You know, one of the problems I have with the Latino population is, um, you, you know, and it's not a problem that I have, it's, I, I truly understand why we have so many families living in the same, same home. And if somebody tests positive for the virus, where are they gonna self-quarantine? You know, it's pretty difficult when you have two, two families with young kids living in the same unit. You know, it's really important.
Mayor, excuse me, Mayor.
I'll be done in a minute, Councilmember Cruz, and then I'll call on you. Um, you know, it's really important.
Stereotyping a group of people, that's incorrect.
Irene, thank you. It's, uh, so Councilmember Cruz, I'll finish and then I'll call on you. Uh, it's really important that, uh, the Latino community understands that there's a place that they can go. And if they need help for any particular reason, whether their fear of being undocumented or whatever, they, they can call you, they can, they can reach out to the community so that they can get down to Sonoma State. But getting back to where, where I was going, I, I don't think that we're gonna have, uh, that many, um, folks out, because I'm hoping that they quarantine themselves. Councilmember Cruz, you had a comment?
Yes, I do, Mayor. I think you're making a statement of stereotyping a whole community with COVID, and that's totally inappropriate. Yes, the county, the county has numbers of a majority of positive testing being persons of Hispanic heritage. However, those are not the only people with COVID in the county, in the state, or in the country. So we cannot be stating things as such, because multi-generational housing happens either you're white, black, American Indian, or Latino. And as a Latina, and as an elected official, just like Ms. Supervisor Gore, who's assigned to the Latino issues with COVID, I must say, I'm not playing a race card here. I am playing a safety measure for the community of Cloverdale. So I'm very offended, Mr. Mayor, by your comment regarding the fireworks, which is actually what we're discussing here, because not only Latinos, Gade, but everybody who enjoys a good time outdoors. I really would like to see a compromise of perhaps selling sane and safe or safe and sane fireworks and perhaps holding the show later on in the year when the weather conditions are better. That the fire department gave a, a go-ahead, uh, two weeks ago or a week ago, that doesn't tell us what's gonna be happening on July 4th. And that doesn't tell us either what is the public health condition of the county or North County. And as you know, there was opening of, of many businesses and Sonoma County said no because of the increase in the last two weeks. So, you know, my only concern is the people of Cloverdale, all people of Cloverdale, the elderly whom I know that have been tested in their respective residing places, the children, all of us who are working, first line and essential workers, and everybody else. Latinos are not Latin.
Thank you.
I really want to emphasize that this is not a Latino illness, it is a pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you mute Councilmember Cruz? You know, Councilmember Cruz, you got a heck of a nerve accusing me of playing a race card. Two or three days ago, you sent out an email on how affected the Latino community was and how we have to go above and beyond to make sure that they're tested. The whole testing that we had on Saturday was geared towards the Latino community.
And 70 people, non-Latino, were tested.
In fact, you bring up that card all the time. I simply mentioned it because the Latino population here in Cloverdale needs to know that there's a place that they can go and not go home to a multifamily residence and take the fear of, of infecting others in their household. End of subject. Are we ready to move this for some type of a vote?
All citizens of this country have an access to a proper and safe shelter by the county of Sonoma.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to move the item.
Thank you. Councilmember Bagby, you need a second on your item? Is there a second on the item? Okay. And I apologize again for my volume. So we're gonna go ahead and unfortunately, Councilmember Bagby, there's no second on your item. So if I'm correct, Jose, the item fails for lack of a second?
That is, that is correct, Mayor. The, the motion fails for lack of a second. The council does have the option to continue discussing the item, potentially providing some direction to, to staff, or decide to just continue the next item with the resolution failing.
Thank you. So the item has failed, is there any more discussion on this item?
I would like to, oop, let me get my video going here. Um, I would like to make sure that there is some clarification that we are in fact gonna get a, um, a safety plan, a hazard mitigation plan, or anything of that nature, uh, as it was mentioned.
Thank you, Councilmember Turner. And yes, there, um, I believe TNT has already put that out, uh, the safe distancing protocol in a brochure to everyone that purchases the safe and sane fireworks, and also the safety pamphlet on how to, uh, to use those safely.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to see us move in that direction. Um, I'd also like to make sure that we keep the conversation with the community going and realize again, it's like this, it, there aren't, this is not a two-sided issue, there are several various opinions. They've come to the council wanting to discuss this publicly. They've also come to the council wanting to make sure that the, um, the good work that's done by our service organizations can move forward. And there were, you know, in the subcommittee meeting, which seems like ancient history about, from about a year ago, um, there were several offers from, one was an attorney who worked with nonprofits and he said he would be happy to work, um, and had experience with fundraisers and would be happy to work with our service organizations. Um, it, you know, and, and I, I don't think we should, um, say, oh, well, you know, they can just have another spaghetti dinner. I don't think that that's what we're saying. I think that what the community is saying is that we need to really band together, um, as a community and maybe revisit, you know, some of the, the old events. I mean, one of the things that was mentioned about a year ago is, you know, just the, the old picnics in the city park, um, you know, other events like that. There are also really great opportunities, especially when we are looking at an economic recovery for our local businesses. There are opportunities for service organizations to partner with manufacturers, you know, in Cloverdale. And I specifically, you know, I think of, um, our two beer manufacturers, you know, there's a possibility for, you know, sourcing a product from a local producer, you know, and not using an imported product to do our fundraising. I think that moving forward for our local economy, that's gonna be really important. I mean, I for one would buy a case of Independence Day fundraising beer, uh, if we, you know, with a partnership between a service organization and, um, you know, Beer Republic or Wolf House Brewery. Um, and I think a lot of folks would, would be into that. I mean, we also, we have great vendors like Flower Girl, you know. I mean, how many apple pies can she make and sell? And, you know, we would be offering them, they would be offered at a premium so that we could, um, you know, raise as many funds. But I just am pointing out that we have a lot of local resources here and we're having, and we're gonna have an economy that's really gonna be rebuilt, need to be rebuilt. And if we can source those products locally, that, those fundraisers do, um, you know, they're, they're doubly or triply good because, um, they would really, you know, contribute to the, uh, the economic multiplier effect of actually purchasing a product that's made locally and, um, developed locally. So I, I think that I'd like to see, you know, further discussions amongst, you know, the Chamber of Commerce had, had also offered to partner service organizations to create some, um, you know, partnership, um, events going forward. So I think if we just kind of keep the conversation alive and, um, don't get split into our separate camps and figure out, you know, what's the best thing for our economy and our community going forward. I really appreciated Christina's comments today, today, that, you know, I think that this pandemic, it's just caused so much stress, it's caused, it's caused so many people, so much fear, and so much difficulty that sometimes our first response is to kind of lash out because we wanna, you know, hold on to what we're, we're used to. But I think in the next couple of years, um, given our, our economic challenges, and we're, we're really gonna need to come together on, um, on some of these issues and, and work together. And I'd like to, you know, I hope that we can move forward in, in that spirit.
Thank you, Councilmember Bagby, and I look forward to you reenacting the ad hoc committee whenever you see appropriate, um, and fit. So, so just to recap, so that the folks out there are quite clear, uh, the city council is not preventing the Lions Club, uh, from either selling safe and sane fireworks this year or doing their big display. So, um, please go, uh, be safe and make sure that you educate those consumers that are buying your products with the handouts that Dennis from TNT. that are buying your products with the handouts that Dennis from TNT is going to supply you with. David, is there anything else you need from us on this item?
Mayor, you've made the council's clear, and the option that was presented as part of rejection of the resolution was clear that they don't have to submit anything other than what they've already provided to the city. So no additional documentation. So there won't be a need to establish a council ad hoc to address fire safety conditions or health and safety conditions. And council is accepting the existing documentation.
Thank you, David. Next item is Resolution to Proven Amendments to the Neighborhood Improvement Grant Program Guidelines, Allowing Utility Bill Relief Eligible Grant Project. And Kevin, I think this is.
Yes. Mayor, councilmember, councilmembers, this is a proposed amendment to our neighborhood grant program that we just established in last year's budget. During our first round, we did receive two grant applications. We did fund both of those, each for $1,000. So leaving a remaining balance of $3,000 in the current budget. There's an additional $5,000 proposed for the next budget, which we'll be discussing as the next item. Our thought here was, and this was David's idea, that we could just use the remaining money to help people pay their water bills for the city. So we, what we're envisioning is a real simple process. If this is approved tonight, I'll get going tomorrow morning on just a simple form that people can just, I just want to make it as easy as possible. We do have, I did outline a few questions that we were looking for some clarification for in the agenda report. We're suggesting $100 would be the maximum for someone to receive as this grant. We'd like to prioritize households that are already behind in payments. And then the last thing would be, if we can, we can report back on how this works, and that might make this number three a little easier to decide. But we'd like to hear if you're interested in trying to keep this going forward to the next budget. And again, that decision doesn't necessarily have to be made tonight. We did attach a resolution. There's just a few simple changes to the grant, neighborhood grant guidelines, allowing utility payments as one of the eligible grants. And if the council likes this idea, we'll work hard to get this out into the community as fast as possible, starting, you know, tomorrow morning. So that's really the conclusion of my report. Maybe we could walk through those three questions and have a discussion. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask something to Kevin? Mr. Mayor?
Yes, you may need to unmute yourself.
Sorry, Kevin, I had my mic off. Kevin, just for the sake of the record, would you please share with us the $2,000 grants that were given out and what they were for? I know you and I know, and most of the council members know, but I think the community at large needs to know how we're spending that money.
Yeah, one was from Bert from the Senior Center and his, a couple other folks who want to do some plantings out in front of the Senior Center. And the other one was, it was in association with the Chamber of Commerce to help the community garden along. And I know technically the grant guidelines are for community members, but the way the applications were written, they included community members. So we always kind of thought this was just, you know, a way to get the money out into the community. And so those are the two, each for $1,000. They have not, again, it's a reimbursement basis. We have not received any receipts from either of those groups. I don't know if they've completed any of the work, but I did indicate to them that it was approved and that they could submit receipts when they were completed.
Mr. Mayor, may I have?
Councilmember Cruz, did you have something to add?
No, I just wanted to emphasize to Kevin, and I think all of us, even though these are very good projects that are going to take place, these are people who are already in the loop and know that where the funds are coming from. And we need to do a little outreach to the community at large, especially to youth, so that people who normally do not benefit from city funds are able to establish new programs in the community. So yes, this is wonderful, but these are the people who already know where the money comes from. It's not reaching the objective of reaching out to a larger community. You know, right now, we have issues with the use of the open space. It'd be a great opportunity to get a youth group to, you know, engage in protection of the environment. We have issues with people riding bikes. It would be great if we could encourage some of those people to engage or apply for monies on safety as they ride bicycles and respect citizens, et cetera. So, you know, the community gardens, wonderful. Senior Center, wonderful. But these are the usual suspects. We need to reach out to more people.
Yeah, and I agree. We, we, we're doing our best. And as it goes on, if the council continues to fund it, I'm hoping the word will get out further. So I agree with your point, and it's something we are working on.
Thank you. Councilmembers, any more questions or discussions before I open this up to the public?
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes?
Kevin, one question. And Jose, you might need to weigh in on this too. I'm curious to know if, how we can fund this, this particular pot of money outside of tax dollars, i.e., could I go hit the bricks for donations and fund the grant pot? My, my next comment that I want to make is, I, I absolutely understand where Councilmember Cruz is coming from. I had a very brief conversation with the individual who owns Rockin' A Adventure Cafe. His name escapes me right now. He had a really fun idea of turning a space, I don't want to give his idea away, but, you know, he wants to turn a space into like a fun thing for Halloween. I'll leave it at that. I think you can do the math on that one. And, you know, he was kind of asking about where seed money could come from, and I had brought up the idea of this grant. And his initial reaction was, well, I didn't think that applied to me. So that was very eye-opening to me that we as a governing body could probably get a little bit more clear on that. And then Kevin, just to remind you of my initial question before I went on a tangent, are there multiple ways in which we can fund this particular pot?
I think we could. I'd like to defer to David or Jose. I mean, I know the city can take donations and administer those out. We hadn't thought about that. It's kind of a cool idea. But that's, I don't know if we have to set up some kind of fund or how that would exactly work, but. David?
Yeah, I think, I think, I think we would have to do some outreach with the community to determine if there's interest in, you know, establishing, let's say, a matching grant program that could couple city funds with private donations and do it in a way that is supportive of the program guidelines. Obviously, the council is responsible for adopting the resolution that sets.
Sorry, it, yeah, on my end, but you are cutting out remarkably. Is that happening for anybody else?
It might be Wi-Fi. My voice seems to be coming clear over here. I was just suggesting that I think with some evaluation, we could.
Can we just make sure that at the theater, if you're not talking, that you're on mute? Can we just make sure that maybe the public address mic is muted? And if you're not speaking, you're on mute.
Can you hear me okay, Melanie?
I can, yeah. But I think if, we just make sure that, yeah, all of the rogue mics are muted, and then we'll, we might be able to hear David a little better because we were having some echo earlier.
Except to the speaker.
So unfortunately, it cuts you out completely on my end. I had to leave and come back. If you've already given your answer, that they've heard it. I'll get it from you offline, but I apologize about that.
No, no, David, Danny, David needs to jump back in because I was talking the whole time. Don't worry about it, Jason. It might have been a problem at your end then if that's what was going on.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Mary Ann's waving her hand. Yes.
Mary Ann, please.
Yeah, hi. I really like the idea. I think it's a very grassroots, very, there's a lot of people that are losing their jobs. And the last thing, I know we can't shut their water off at this point, but it's all just going to build up and build up and build up. So I'd like to see actually more boots-on-the-ground kind of projects like this. Water's important. So I like the idea. I think Kevin and David came up with a good way of using it since nobody else seemed to want it. So I think it's a logical move.
Councilmember Bagby?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, yeah, I just wanted to commend Kevin for this because, you know, let's remember that this is the first year of the grant, and it was kind of introduced, you know, right in the midst of COVID-19 crisis. So, you know, the original purpose was for, you know, community unity building, you know, block parties, pocket parks, those sorts of things. And, you know, those have just been completely on hold. So, you know, I think that the use of the funds for the, the community garden, because it, it, of course, it's serving the members of the community garden, which is the community, and also the Senior Center, which is just, you know, it needs a little bit of sprucing up. I think that, given that it's our first year, first time out, that there were limited funds and that the COVID crisis is going on, I think those were really appropriate. But I just really want to commend Kevin for opening it up for those water bills and just finding some money in the budget that's already been allocated to think can go directly to help people where they are now. I mean, that's the kind of leadership that are, and, you know, thinking on their feet that our staff have been doing through this whole crisis. And I just, you know, really want to thank him for his leadership. And, yeah, I'd like to see us move forward with this. I think it's a great, great first year. And, yeah, Kevin should really be commended for this.
Thank you, Councilmember Bagby. Anybody else, Monda?
Mayor, yes. No, I think it's a great idea to help folks that need to pay their bill. I think this, you know, it really goes out, and I hope that people understand that it's special circumstances. But definitely so that we could also use this money within the fiscal year.
Thank you. Councilmembers, anything else? Okay, let me open this up to the public. Anyone wishing to address the city council on this item may do so. There is no one, oh, there's one person in the Performing Arts Center. And Irene, do we have anybody on, on the internet that would like to talk to us?
No raised hands on this item, Mayor.
Okay. Then I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment section. Would you like to speak, Laura? Oh, I saw you, Laura, I'm sorry. So with that being said, there's a resolution, if somebody would like to offer it.
I'd like to move the item, Mr. Mayor.
I will second.
Okay. Would somebody read it by title only, please?
Oh, let me see. You know what? You caught me flat-footed.
I'm sorry.
Can you find it? No, no problem. No, it's going there. Let's see. I like, yeah, let's see. City of Cloverdale City Council, A Resolution of City of Cloverdale City Council Amending the Neighborhood Improvement Grant Program Guidelines to Include Utility Bill Relief Related to COVID-19 as an Eligible Grant Project.
And that was seconded by Councilmember Turner. Could we have a roll call?
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Turner?
Aye.
And Mayor Walter?
Aye. Okay, the next item, but before we start on that, would anyone like to take a break at this time?
That would be a fantastic idea, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, it is now 7:21. How about we come back at 7:30? Thank you. Thank you. Okay, thank you, folks. We're back from our short break. Councilmember Turner is here. I'm here. Most of the staff is here. We just have to wait a couple of minutes for Councilmember Bagby, Cruz, and Mary Ann is here. So just a couple more minutes and we'll get started. Councilmember Cruz is back. So we're just going to wait for Melanie. Melanie, are you back? Okay, she's back. Okay, folks, we're going to go on to item number eight. Irene, luck of the record to reflect that we reconvene meeting at 7:31. The next item is Budget Presentation, Overview, Discussion and of the City's, City of Cloverdale Draft Budget for Fiscal Year 2021. And David, this is yours.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. So I just want to mention that the, included in the agenda packet is a copy of the draft fiscal year 2021 budget, along with a budget presentation that accompanies the budget document. I do want to say that the budget document is a work in progress. We continue to make minor tweaks and refinements. For instance, after this budget was produced and published, we did receive updated financial projections for the gas tax from Michael Coleman, which will have an impact on some of the revenues in the, that are included in the budget. And obviously, staff will update those accordingly and bring that forward for council considerations part of the final budget. So really, we seek this as an opportunity for council to weigh in and provide feedback to staff on the proposed budget. What the budget is intended to do is implement the council's work plan and the staff's work plan for the next fiscal year. Again, the fiscal year began July 1, and 2020, and ends June 30. And this budget was, you know, developed based on the goals that were presented at the goal-setting workshop. Unfortunately, that workshop was shortened due to the initiation of the COVID-19 pandemic. And at that time, we were just able to review, you know, some of the council boards. But we'll talk about that a little bit more. With the onset, obviously, of COVID-19, what we've seen is a dramatic decline in revenue on some of our discretionary revenue sources, particularly sales tax as well as transit occupancy tax. And that is reflecting the revenue projections that were included in the current fiscal year budget. So obviously, what we'll end up doing is ending this year with a reduced amount of revenue that will carry over into next fiscal year. And we anticipate that there will be continued revenue impact. So that kind of sets the context for development of our budget. What we did do is, in direction from staff, was to, you know, really come in with a relatively flat budget and seek areas where we could reduce expenses. Nonetheless, in light of the COVID-19 emergency and the impact on revenues, we are seeing an impact to our budget and is requiring us to utilize of reserve balances in the budget to balance the budget for fiscal year 2021. So that kind of sets the context. The budget that we did prepare for the council's consideration does identify beginning and ending fund balances for all of the city's funds, including the general fund, then the housing fund, and the street fund, gas tax, your water and sewer enterprise, as well as your airport enterprise, as well as impact fees. So there's a fund summary that is provided that I'll discuss a little bit, and we'll talk about that just briefly. Ultimately, kind of the big picture perspective on the general fund, which is, you know, the major fund that the council oversees and has discretion over, does require us to use approximately $1 million in reserve balances. Luckily, we did have a pretty significant carryover at the end of our fiscal year 2019, which is going to help out our fund balance tremendously. With that said, I'd like to talk a little bit just about the goal-setting process. One of the things that we attempted to do this year is really focus on core activities. And included with the presentation is overview of each of the department's core functions. You know, it's what we must do. And it's intended to support a work plan that's based on what we will do and what the budget goals are. Particularly, probably the budget themes, really the top budget themes. The growth, development of the budget goals, including economic recovery. We recognize that the, there's a tremendous impact to our recovery from COVID-19. Obviously, immediately predating that was the Kincaid Fire, which also had economic impacts related to the public safety power shut off, the gas shut off, and city expenses in responding to that event. We also recognize a need that's based on the financial forecast that was prepared and presented to council in August of 2019, to really look at opportunities to enhance our revenue sources. Because we recognize that generally revenue is flattening or plateauing after a period of growth. All the while, our cost basis is increasing. So the need to enhance our revenue sources is something that we plan to undertake in this next fiscal year. We continue to devote time and energy because we see a tremendous need to prepare our community for the next emergency, whatever that emergency might be, and to continue to invest in both public safety and emergency preparedness and continue our resiliency efforts. In addition, we recognize that affordable housing and homelessness continue to be an issue. And part of our work plan and our effort is to continue addressing the issue of homelessness in Sonoma County and in Cloverdale. In addition, we recognize that infrastructure is vitally important for the long-term growth and development of our city. And particularly in our enterprises, there's a number of investments identified in not only the maintenance of our current infrastructure, but also improvement of our infrastructure to continue to support our growing city. And then last but not least, planning and sustainability. So Irene, if you can kind of just move forward one slide to our budget goal statement. So this really reflects, these were presented again at that budget workshop. This, again, is a work plan-based approach to budget goals. And I certainly welcome council's input on these goals. These are, again, reflective of those top budget themes. And I won't, for sake of time, I won't walk through each one of those budget goal statements, but I encourage council to take a look at those and offer their feedback. They're intended to provide, you know, the big picture statement relative to those budget themes that we just presented. In your budget presentation, there is an overview of core services for all of the city departments. And it really, again, getting back to the budget and focusing on core services, the intent was to identify what all those core services were so that council could understand the connection between what's in the budget and what services we are providing. I'm not going to, again, for sake of time, walk through the work plan or the core services for each of the departments. But again, welcome council feedback and input on those core services and the work plan that's presented within, in the presentation. At this time, I'd just like to jump ahead to the summary of fund balances. And this is an area where I really recommend council. That is... I have a slide number, unfortunately. Slide 27. What the summary of fund balances does is provide both an estimated fund balance beginning at the start of the fiscal year and an estimated fund balance estimated at the end of the fiscal year. And what's key about that is it shows you how that particular fund is either increasing or decreasing. Unfortunately, in the proposed budget year, many of the fund balances are decreasing, which reflects either decreased revenue or increased expenditures. In particular, I want to point out the Fund 100, which is your general fund. We are estimating a fund balance beginning in the fiscal year of about $3... If I can see clearly enough here, $3.6 million. And we estimate a decrease in that general fund balance of approximately $950,000, which will result in an estimated ending fund balance of $2.7 million. One of the things that is key is that the council does have a reserve policy. That reserve policy does call for a minimum of a 25% fund balance. Where we've ended in terms of the draft budget is a fund balance of just slightly above 30%. And we really recommend adopting a budget, maintaining a fund balance above the minimum because we know that, and we fully anticipate, that during the next fiscal year, there will be a need to do budget adjustments for unplanned expenditures. And so that would provide us some flexibility to address those unplanned expenditures during the fiscal year while maintaining the fund balance. But council does have some discretion within your fund balance policy to provide additional allocations within the budget and still be within reserve. So what this does is provide, again, that kind of high-level perspective of how each of those major funds are going to operate over the fiscal year in 2020, 21. And again, the highlight there is the impacts related to COVID-19 on your general fund, which we've estimated that nearly two-thirds of that decrease is related to direct declines in major revenue sources. So almost $600,000 of that $900,000 is related directly to declines in revenue from loss of retail sales tax, as well as transit occupancy tax and other permits and fee revenue. Likewise, you also see a declining fund balance, particularly in your water and sewer operations. And if you take a closer look at those budgets, one of the things that is identified is that there are a number of major, either maintenance or improvement projects that will propose to utilize the fund balance to undertake. And those are, you know, again, considered, the way I would view those are as investments in the city's infrastructure. But it does result in a declining fund balance for those particular enterprise funds. Irene, if you can, just to progress to next slide. So this slide, again, this is included in your budget. This shows the overall expenditure by department. And this gives you just a perspective on the expenses by department type. So you can see, again, where the majority of expenses occur by department member. Next slide. One of the things I wanted to point out with your major general fund revenue sources is, of course...
David, I'm so sorry, David. Mr. Mayor, do you prefer questions to be kept till the end or shall we ask as he goes through?
David, how would you like to take questions?
It's your discretion.
What are you easier with?
Well, maybe I'll cover this one and then we can...
Okay.
Open it up for questions.
Councilmember Turner, we're going to go ahead and finish this slide, and then we'll open it up on the past slides that we just covered.
Thank you.
This slide reflects the major general fund revenue sources. And what I wanted to share with council is that in terms of property taxes, we're projecting a 3% growth in excess valuation, and that's reflected in an increase in the proposed property tax revenue for next fiscal year. We didn't anticipate that there would be a negative impact related to COVID-19. However, there is some data suggesting that there could be longer-term impacts, but we're not anticipating them in next fiscal year. Generally, property tax impacts tend to lag. However, we do recognize a considerable decline in the sales and use tax. The anticipated actual for last fiscal year was $1,072,000. This year, we are estimating a receipt of $919,000, which is almost a 20%, just a little less than a 20% decrease in sales tax revenue for the fiscal year. So that's where we're recognizing, you know, one of the more significant impacts in terms of revenue. The other area where we are recognizing the impact on revenue is in the transit occupancy tax, which is the third one up from the bottom. So you can see, in the current fiscal year, we budgeted $235,000 in revenue, and we are budgeting, proposing to budget $152,000. So almost an $85,000 reduction in TOT revenue that we anticipate in the next fiscal year budget. Next slide. This just shows you overall general fund revenue by type. Breaks it down by, of course, general taxes, licensing permits, intergovernmental charges, percussions, miscellaneous revenue. And the budget document does a good job of providing the detail on each one of these particular categories. Next slide. Did want to touch briefly on the city council budget. Much of the city council budget is made up of fees and contracts that are related to city services. But one in particular that I wanted to point out, which is a major expenditure under miscellaneous contract services, is $35,000 budgeted for the polling and strategy services. And this would be related to a potential ballot measure in November of next year. Otherwise, many of the expenditures that are proposed within the city council budget relate to, you know, memberships either with LAFCO, ABA, Leave California Cities, National League of Cities, or Lucien, as well as some training and travel. And as we discussed earlier today, or in the agenda tonight, promotions, which we included $5,000 again for neighborhood grants. Next slide. Mayor, I just wanted to stop. I kind of progressed without providing Vice Mayor Turner opportunity to answer his question or ask that question.
Thank you, David. It'll be a very quick one. I just want to wrap my head around. I think we need to go back maybe four slides, please, Irene. One more for me, please. Thank you. David, Department 301 Police Administration, Department 302 Police Operations. Can you please provide me a very high overview as to what the difference is?
Absolutely. Police Administration is the budget for our police chief, lieutenant, and I believe includes our sergeants, whereas Police Operations is for the remainder of the department.
Thank you, David. I appreciate that.
Vice Mayor, this is an opportunity for our Finance Director, Susie Holmes, to weigh in if she wants to provide any additional detail on the difference between those two budget categories.
You think she's good?
No, I think it that covered it. One is administrative and the other is actually our officers out on the street. Sorry, you're muted.
Susie, basically, everything in the 300 category is related to the Police Department.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. 303 is dispatch and 304 is community services.
Got you. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, that was my question too. Thank you.
Any other questions? Now we're going to go ahead and move on.
Okay. Irene, if you want to advance the slides. I did want to touch on the community support budget. We know that the council has supported the Cloverdale Chamber of Commerce for a number of years, and we've included in the draft budget funding level at $65,000. That's a slight increase of $2,500 over the current fiscal year. And we did that strategically because we believe there's going to be increased need to do additional marketing within the community to support a recovery effort as part of COVID-19. The other expenses pretty much are at the current levels. They are in the budget. I also want to note that the Fair Free Program, which was implemented in this current fiscal year, is also planned to continue next fiscal year. And so we've included a budget number that reflects the cost of that program. That was just reviewed by the Public Works Subcommittee and was, you know, recommended for support. We plan on bringing back that agreement for council approval at your next meeting. And, you know, this is where the budget for that particular item is included. We've also continued the support for the Senior Center as well as the Boys and Girls Club is, and then last but not least, recognizing that we need to work more closely with the Citrus Fair on our emergency response. And Care and Shelter, we've included $6,000 in the budget for the emergency program. So with that, Mayor, I guess we can walk through each and every one of the departmental budgets, but really wanted just to take the time to touch on those two particular budgets, the council budget and the community support budget for council's consideration. We can, if there's any particular items that council would like to provide feedback on, more than happy to, you know, go to those budget pages and in the actual budget that's included in the budget packet and entertain a discussion. Obviously, we normally do this as part of an all-day budget workshop where we spend considerable time walking through, you know, all the elements of the budget. All senior staff is here. So if you have any particular inquiries on particular work plan items or work programs within their departments, I know they're more than happy to address it because they've worked hard to develop the budget that is presented to you. Really, what we'd like to do is continue to refine the budget, get any input or direction from council so that we can bring it back at your next meeting on June 10th for proposed adoption. Normally, we would bring back adoption by resolution. And that gives us flexibility if there's any final minor tweaks to have one more, provide the council with one more meeting opportunity, should there be any major revisions from that point on.
Thank you, David. Councilmember Cruz, you have a question? Unmute.
Yes. Lowering my hand here. Yes, I have a question, David. I would like to know if there is a way to see how the money is spent and what has been the yearly review of some of these donations? I'm particularly concerned about the Cloverdale Boys and Girls Club because they, we were all there when they announced that children are only going to pay $50 for summer program. And I just got a text that it goes into thousands of dollars. And I asked what happened to that grant and what happened to the contributions we did for Cloverdale. And I'm still waiting for a response. So I think we need to find out because one of the objectives of doing this is to make sure that our children in Cloverdale get access to programs that otherwise they cannot attend. And also to provide an alternative in the summer for activities that the city cannot provide because we don't have a Parks and Rec program.
That's a great, that's a great question, Councilmember Cruz. My understanding is that the Cloverdale Boys and Girls Club hasn't submitted their request for the current fiscal year. So we haven't allocated that funding yet. Normally, I think we do it sometimes in spring and it supports funding through the summer period. I think it's been our traditional timing associated with providing the funding with the Boys and Girls Club. So I don't think we've made any allocations this fiscal year, current fiscal year yet. But the proposed budget level that we, is included in the draft budget, is the same amount for next fiscal year as this fiscal year.
Councilmember Brigham.
I'm not sure. I didn't look very carefully on this particular issue, but it just occurred to me that the Sculpture Trail isn't in this list. And we usually give the Sculpture Trail $1,000, I believe.
Yes.
And they raise all the rest of the money through just various donations and sponsor sculpture. They'll have somebody who sponsors a sculpture, but we couldn't find anybody like Joyce and that group that would do this for $1,000. And I think it really adds a lot to our community.
Yeah, I saw Autocast on a previous page. I just can't find it now. And that's the.
That's what I was wondering about.
I saw it. Or Susie used, I just, now I can't find it.
Yeah, the Autocast item.
Because that's the Sculpture Trail.
That's correct. Yes. Department 1, where is it?
It's in the community support budget.
Yeah.
And it's under miscellaneous contract services under other promotional programs. And it's Autocast. So we have $1,500 identified for our support for that program.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bagby.
Thank you. Yeah, I just had a quick question. I'm getting you down in the weeds. And maybe we can take up some of this at the Finance and Police Admin coming up. But I just had a question about, on page 153 or 29 of the budget, 153 of the packet. Under Rentals and Copy Machine, we've got $20,250. And I'm just wondering if that's a carryover from previous years or is that a reflection of what I'm hoping was a considerable decrease in volume after we adopted the iPads? So I'm just wondering if that lease has been adjusted.
Right.
Let us take a, let us take a look at our expenditures today and see where we are relative to our printing costs.
Right.
We'll update that accordingly.
Right. And then just to follow up down it, under Utilities and Telephone, I'm seeing $42,000 for AT&amp;T. I'm wondering if we should maybe talk about VoIP at some point, which would only be appropriate if we have that second fail-safe internet backup. I, if you, yeah, have we actually implemented that at City Hall where we have the fail-safe internet backup?
Yeah, we have not implemented that project. I think the goal was to establish a secondary ISP service. So we had redundancy. One of the service providers that we were looking at does provide VoIP. And I think that is.
Sonic does provide VoIP and I think it would be a significant saving. So yeah, if we can look at it at the subcommittee level under administration, that would be a pretty significant savings, so.
And if I can, Mayor and council members, make a comment. I think because of the tremendous uncertainty this year around the revenue sources, I'd like to propose that, you know, we schedule and consider more routine review of the budget. And that could certainly be done at the subcommittee level. And then bring it back to council for any kind of major policy direction or otherwise, you know, updates. But I think there's a real need, rather than doing kind of the semi-annual process that we've traditionally done to really maybe look at the budget on a quarterly basis. Because especially with sales tax revenue, there's a six-month delay before provided that data. But it may be critical once we get that data to then ensure that with subcommittee members. So we can, you know, what's the not, at least rolled up in a way that's confidential or maintains confidentiality, but to really understand how it reflects in our budget.
That's right. I was going to recommend at least a quarterly review at the subcommittee level. So thank you.
Councilmember Turner.
Yeah, so I'd like to hear my colleagues' point of view on this. I really find the budget workshop, having now done a year where it was incredibly abbreviated for very understandable, obvious, wait a minute, I'm getting okay. I really found a benefit in us all coming together and the outcomes of not only just the budget presentation, but us being able to really have the dialogues. A lot of the representatives from these major groups send a proxy or they themselves come and kind of give us an idea on what we can anticipate money being spent on. Chamber of Commerce does a pretty active auditing where they kind of let us know periodically throughout the year. But I'd really like to get the feel of the group about truly, just even if it's via Zoom, noticing and having a committed time to just the topic rather than it being an agenda item on an otherwise scheduled council meeting and really have that time carved out.
Well, I'm okay with, excuse me. Well, I'm okay with setting up a special workshop if I'm hearing you correctly, Councilmember Turner.
Correct, yes.
Yeah. The council members, how do you feel about that?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Well, I believe that it will be worth having perhaps a shorter kind of workshop on some items that we may have some doubts or some concerns about. And also perhaps shift some priorities.
Well, I think a workshop like that is good if we all get some questions over to staff prior to the workshop so that they could dig into the topic that we're looking to discuss a little deeper. Councilmember Bagby.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I have mixed feelings about it because I fully appreciate the, and I miss the input from, you know, from Nina and, you know, from the chamber and from Citrus Fair and all the folks who usually show up and advocate for their interests and point stuff out to us that we didn't notice. I just, that's what's really, you know, unfortunate about it. But I also think that it kind of has to be balanced. If we are really going to go to looking at our budget on a quarterly basis, I think it's, there are a lot of moving parts here. I'm a little ambivalent about it. I can see benefits. I can see a benefit of, you know, doing a dedicated workshop and getting input from the public. But I'm wondering if it's going to be so fluid that we're really going to be dependent on those quarterly check-ins more than, you know, a public workshop. So I'm just, I'm just saying, I'm just a little ambivalent about it. I'm also a little concerned with the level of staff work that it would require. I'd want to hear from staff if it would just, at this point, if we did a special dedicated workshop is, if they're just so busy and so maxed out that it would be an undue burden. So that's just, that's where I'm just kind of concerned. Though, I mean, I always appreciate the input, but I'm just wondering how much benefit we'll get out of it if we are really monitoring things on a quarterly basis. And maybe we're better off having, making sure that those folks are participating in those subcommittee meetings on those quarterly adjustments.
If I may, real quick, and then I definitely want to hear staff's input. And thank you, Melanie. I think you bring up a great point and I'm definitely willing to wiggle on this. What I would ask is, how do you, at this point in time, understanding we're just theorizing, how would you view the roadmap to where things would come out of the subcommittee without necessarily a recommendation? So the subcommittee's looked at it. We want the council to discuss it, but we haven't necessarily made a recommendation on it. Is that kind of the pathway you see? Or do you see more of the Police Finance and Admin Subcommittee taking a lead role on this? And when the items come up, they make recommendations. And then as the remaining council, we would either come along with that recommendation or offer our rebuttal. And I'm just, I'm not holding anybody to anything. I just want an idea of how you think that roadmap would look.
David, what are your thoughts on staff time from Councilmember Bagby's question and Councilmember Turner's statement?
I had some.
Sure. So just real quick before Councilmember Cruz weighs in. So we were, timing-wise, we're obviously May 27th. We really want to be in a position to adopt the budget before the end of the fiscal year. So we've just really got, you know, a little over 30 days in which to bring forward and have the council consider a budget for final adoption. So there's only two meetings between, two regular meetings between now and then scheduled for the 10th and 24th. So, you know, any workshop would have to be kind of crunched in there. And then we'd have to make, you know, any revisions or updates at that particular time. An alternative to that would be certainly to publish the draft budget on our website, have it available for public review, also send it to key interested stakeholders. and members of our community, so that, you know, of course, you know, it is, it is publicly available documents. Post it on our website now, but to, to, to make it more prominent and, and to seek that input. Of course, once the council adopts, adopts the budget document, you really should see it as a work in progress. It's fluid. The council can make amendments and, and should, either to the revenue projections, up them or decrease them, or, or the, you know, the expenditures, of course, within the, within the guidelines that council has adopted. So there, there's numbers, a number of ways to, to address, I think, what would be the goal of, of reaching out to the community on this budget, or at least to key stakeholders. I think with respect to the question that Vice Mayor Turner raised, I think it's, it would be, you know, ideal if, as part of that review of the budget, if there were key issues or key matters that required policy input, that there would be a recommendation that was provided, then that would be forwarded to, to, to the council. I know we got a, obviously, a number of important business items that we will be continuing to bring forward, but I think the budget this year is going to be particularly important in light of the economic impacts, the economic situation that we find ourselves in.
And, and, you know, one of the things that David and I spoke about just a little earlier this evening, you know, you don't have to wait for a workshop. If you've got a question on this budget, I'm, just call them directly. Him or Suzie can get your answer, so.
And, and, and just to, just to conclude, thank you for that honest answer, David. And, and I really believe it's, it's well thought out and it's logical, and, and I won't argue that point anymore. I, I, I think the timeframe constraints that you're working with, and the fact that we have an assembled and active subcommittee that can take a lead role on this, I, I, I won't argue that. So, so thank you for that honest answer, and I, I, I look forward to how this moves forward.
Councilmember Cruz?
Yes, my comment is that perhaps this needs to happen every six months, and those little tweaks could happen internally, unless it's something major. Because I know how crazy everybody goes every time there's a budget review. And to do this every three months, I mean, it's like you need a whole month to prepare, and then you make a presentation, and then you have new directives, and again, it's a lot of work, and there's so much going on right now. And again, it's very fluid. Not everybody is gonna be available in, with that frequency, I don't believe. So I think we just want to use the staff's time in the best way possible.
Thank you. David, before you continue, is it appropriate now to open this to public comment? So we don't get too far behind with the public as well?
Absolutely, Mayor. I, I mean, really, at this time, it, you know, it's, it's really up to council. If you want to hear more staff overview of the proposed budget, or any particular departments that you'd like to look at, we can focus right, you know, we can go right to those particular pages in the budget, like we traditionally have done during the workshop process. But I really just wanted to, at this point, be able to present the budget to council.
Okay.
And, and entertain your feedback.
Well, let's do this. While the councilmembers think of any questions that they may have, or any other fund balances or anything they want to look at, let me just open it up for public comment. Anyone from the public wishing to address the city council on this item, please step up to the, to the podium and share with us. In the meantime, Irene, is there anybody on the internet that would like to make public comment?
Mayor, there are no currently, any hands raised for this item.
Okay, thank you. Seeing nobody come to the podium, we're gonna go ahead and close the public comment. And Irene, just a quick question. I notice I can't chat to particular councilmembers to let them know that I recognize the waving their hands. Is there any way I can do that on this?
No, the webinar setting is currently, does not display the chat.
All right, thank you. Okay, councilmembers, Councilmember Bagby?
Just kind of a, a general follow-up for the city manager. And let's see how, let's figure out how to ask the question. So is there any place that you can point to in particular where, you know, City Hall or operation expenses due to COVID-19 measures are reflected? Like, you know, have you taken and have you increased the, you know, or considered maybe improved HVAC at City Hall? Or, you know, personal air purifiers, or the PPE, things like that? Where, you know, where in the budget, you know, were those adjustments made, or, you know, where, where will we see that?
Yeah, generally, in, you know, in response to your question, where you'll, you'll see it really throughout the budget. So there's not a, a specific location that I can point to readily, but maybe.
Yeah, can you, can you maybe point to some categories, like where there's a, you know, an increase from last year or something like that, just so that you just highlight some of the, the biggies or?
Maybe what we can do, we can pull out those items and highlight where they are in the budget. I, I'm not sure that we, we, we have a, a call-out for some of the smaller emergency line items that we, we may need to expend on, or, or plan expenditures for. But certainly where you see items, in, in, particularly like in the water enterprise, where we are trying to address the need for resiliency and improve our, our infrastructure response, you'll, you'll definitely see items in there. But, you know, the PPE and things like that are just kind of embedded in each of the departmental budgets. So it's not, it's not a real easy item to call out. But Suzie, you're welcome to weigh in if you, if you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm scanning through my document right now, because I think a lot of the safety things came out of impact fees, and you'll see them towards the back of the budget, near page 140. It, it breaks out several of the, like the instruction for the Portland Lou, and, and I mean, I could go through each of one of them, but.
Yeah, that's just, that's not necessary, but I just wanted to see, and I, and I'm sure that you're doing everything you can to earmark items that, you know, there might be federal dollars or state dollars, or, you know, or grant funding for. So I'm sure you're gonna be on top of that. But I just was wondering if, yeah, if you could just kind of, you know, highlight some of the, the big items that are gonna be increases for us in the coming year.
Okay.
We can, we can definitely do that in preparation for bringing the budget back.
Right, thank you.
We'll call that out. We, we have been tracking all of our expenses related to our emergency response. Obviously, it's dasteful to seek, you know, reimbursement for as many of those expenses as possible. You know, in, in regards to the, you know, the current emergency, there was no, no area in the budget where funds were, were dedicated for, you know, an emergency response like we've had to engage in. So we, we have been coding those expenses appropriately, so that we can, we can seek, seek reimbursement. We, again, didn't count on those funds in the budget, just because of the tremendous uncertainty around getting reimbursement, but certainly that will be our plan, is to seek reimbursement through FEMA.
Yeah, I think it's also important to know that there were a lot of things that were in the, that the department heads requested, that did not make it into the budget. And it, I, I'm going off memory, but it was like $329,000 from the general fund and additional expenditures that the department heads know they need. They either decided to put it off for a year, or, you know, wait and see what happens with the revenue. So everybody was trying to be mindful of our lack of revenue this year.
Thank you, Suzie. Councilmembers, any other questions?
I have one, if I may.
Yes, please.
Can we see Public Works, please?
Can we see, I'm, I'm sorry, Jason, what?
I, I just wanted to get a, David was mentioning that if we had any specific that we wanted to see, that, that we could kind of bring it up, and, and Public Works just being one of the more visible entities. I'd, I'd just like to kind of see how they're doing and, and just kind of get a, an overview there if we can.
Our Fund 210, David? Or whoever's showing on the screen.
Suzie, you have, I'm, I'm scrolling through my iPad. Do you know which page?
I'll get there. It is page 190. But if you want, if you wanted to just see the fund balances, that's gonna be on page five, unless you want to see all the detail.
Well, I guess, I guess, and even if Mark's on the call too, is there anything sizable? I know we had kind of talked about a couple of different things that you guys are, are building, and, and I'm, I'm sure those still need to move forward, but, you know, just, just an overview of what challenges they may be facing, what hopes and dreams they might have had that we might have to squash, just things like that.
Yeah, councilmembers, the fund, of course, like Suzie had mentioned, we try to keep the, the lid on, on expenditures this coming fiscal year. A lot of the constructions you see out there right now is operating on, on this year's budgets. Next year's budget, we're gonna depend heavily on, on alternative funding sources, such as the impact fees and whatnot to get things done. And so we're not giving up on projects just yet, but just being cognizant of the general fund and, and trying to lay off of that. So, you know, depending on SB 1 for, for pavement projects that we have pending and, and items like that. So we've cut back a lot, especially for the parks and for the streets. The, the water fund and, and the wastewater fund, we, we were conscious of, of not doing too much so that we don't impact the balances. So as Suzie mentioned, we tried to, tried to use some of the balance just to carry us through the remainder of the next fiscal year.
And just to tag on to Mark's comments, they're also planning to use a lot of money from like Thoroughfare impact fees, Measure M funds. They're, they're pulling them from, from all over in order to complete the projects that they have started.
Well, th- thank you guys for the just flexibility and, and the ability to just look everywhere you can to, to get what you need. And, and Mark, I, I know we asked a lot of you and your staff, and, and just thank you for, for giving it hell, man.
Vice Mayor, if I may, just to, just to point out, you know, Public Works is, is, is all encompassing in terms of streets, you know, parks and recreation, the water enterprise, the sewer enterprise, and then engineering. So, you know, globally, it encompasses a number of different funds. The, the engineering budget, which maybe is what you're alluding to in terms of, you know, the engineering staff, is on page 53 and 54 of the budget. And that's focuses, you know, on, on the engineering team, but then you go to the different funds. If you want to look at Parks and Rec, you know, component of the Public Works Department, or the Water Enterprise, to see the specific projects funded by water, you know, and so forth. So we can, we can delve into any of those details if you like.
Well, thank you. And, and I, I can get in, in, into the weeds on my time and, and reach out to you if I have any questions, David. I, I just really appreciated the overview at this time. Thank you.
It's really your pleasure and the council's pleasure on, on, we have any additional questions or comments?
Thank you.
Or where you'd like staff to go with the budget?
Thank you, David. I'm, I'm playing with my iPad and losing half the things here. But councilmembers, anything else on the budget before we decide what we want to do with it?
I guess a question, Mayor, for the council is, you know, traditionally, again, we, we provide a, a paper document that's bound on, which, which, you know, sometimes a paper document for this kind of discussion is helpful. So you don't have to try to look at everything through, through the digital lens. But we're, we're obviously trying to be expeditious in our virtual meeting and efficient. But if council likes, we can print a, a paper copy and put it in your mailboxes. But it's really up to you as councilmembers whether you'd like a paper copy or not.
Are we, are we talking 159 pages?
Yeah, it's.
I'm just looking at the, what's in the packet here.
It's about 300. It looks like it's.
300 pages, yeah. I, I'll, I'll persevere without it, and I'll print off the pages individually of the ones that, that I need. Councilmembers, is there anyone that would like a printed copy of this?
No, thank you. All digital for me, please, staff.
Okay, yeah, we don't want to shame anyone in public here, so. They might, they may call you separately tomorrow, David, and ask you, but they're not gonna do it in public, so that's good. So where do we leave this, David? You're gonna wait to hear from us? And you're gonna make sure that we all have the electronic version of all 300 pages, Irene? Okay.
We, we will, how about, staff will, will post it up on the city's website.
Great, okay.
With, with a news that the, you know, draft budget has been prepared and is available for review, with a note that we'll be bringing it back to council on, on June 10th. If there's any particular stakeholders or partners you'd like us to send it to, we'd be happy to do that. In terms of department expenditures or projects, you know, certainly reach out to me or reach out directly to the department head, copy me. And I, I know they can provide any additional details on, on some of the projects and activities that we're, we're proposing. Again, we did try to, you know, capture, we've heard from council in the past, and bring those projects forward in the next fiscal year, so to, to really, you know, have a work-plan-based approach on our, on our budget.
When would you and Suzie like us to be back to you by, so that we can make that June meeting? Would, when would you like to have all your com, all of our comments into you?
Well, ideally, you, we'd have them by the end of next week, so we could, we could address them. But, I mean, the, the hope would be we, we could present, you know, a final draft at, on, on, at the council meeting on June 10th, with the understanding that if council provides, you know, direction on, on minor revisions or updates, that we can, we can make those changes, even with the, you know, with, with the adoption of the budget, so long as it doesn't have some major, major impact.
All right. Okay, so by next week, by the end of next week, if we could. And, and who's the liaison for the Chamber? Is that Mata, are you the liaison for the Chamber?
It's both Jason and I.
Okay.
I remember if I'm the alternate or not.
As far as reaching out to the different, you know, whoever the liaison for the Chamber, I think should, should go over the budget with them, and maybe you as well, David, just so they know where we're at. The Boys and Girls Club, it sounds to me like they haven't made a request yet, so, so there's no sense in, in sitting down with them. But I think we do have to reach out to our, to the Senior Center, to the History Center, the Performing Arts Center, just to make sure that we've got all of their requests in, because that usually goes the last minute. We, I know Rebecca was looking to come. I thought she was gonna be here this evening, but I think she's looking for a present, to do a presentation as well. So, Councilmember Cruz?
Yes, so would Kevin be doing the outreach to the community development groups? Like the Senior Center, I know this, yeah, the Senior Center and CPAC and so on. I mean, I'd be happy to go with, with the Senior Center, because I've been working a lot with them lately, and the same thing with the Chamber. But then the other organizations that get donations, maybe Kevin could take over that?
Okay, well, we'll let David decide that. All I'm saying is if you're, if you're the liaison to, to one of our partners, the liaison should reach out to them with city manager or with Suzie and kind of say, here's what we've got planned. What are you thinking? So.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Anything else, councilmembers or staff? If not, David, if you're comfortable, I'm gonna proceed to the next item, which is Subcommittee Reports. Okay? All right, Subcommittee Reports. I, I don't know if you have something to say on your Subcommittee, that'd be great. Otherwise, let's move along. Finance, Finance Administration and Police?
Well, we will be meeting on June 2nd and apparently the mayor and I will be solving all of the city's financial issues at that meeting.
Excellent. Thank you for that. Yeah, if you could just harvest the money tree real quick, that'd be great.
That's right. I figure we'll be printing Cloverdale dollars and that's how we'll make it work. But other than that, yeah, if you have any, you know, questions or input, please, yeah, please do let us know before the, that meeting is coming up on June 2nd.
Okay, in the planning sustainability, we'll be meeting Mary Ann on June 16th. Public Works, Councilmember Cruz, I think.
David, could you provide the stats on the ridership with the public, the Sonoma County boss? We are very happy about this and it was discussed in Public Works Committee. Ridership has increased immensely and even though we cannot talk about a Sunday service, so far Monday through Saturday has been incredibly high. Was it like 115% increase, David?
That's right, Councilmember Cruz, we discussed the ridership data for the current fiscal year that was provided by Mr. Brian Albee at the Public Works Subcommittee meeting this week. And it did reflect that the numbers show that ridership is up just slightly over 100%. So almost a doubling in, in ridership associated with implementation, direct implementation of the fare free program. So very significant increase in ridership seems to particularly benefit our, our senior community as well as our, our youth community. So it seems like it's a very successful increase in ridership. Actually, Cloverdale had the highest increase in ridership from a percentage perspective.
No, I'm going to take that back to SCTA. I had not caught that stat. Thank you, David.
Well, it confirms my suspicions that the only way public transportation can work is if you make it free. So with that being said, City Fire District Subcommittee? I'm sorry, Councilmember Turner, if you could just unmute.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So it shows we have a meeting scheduled for June 8th. I'd like to know if someone wants to be a thought partner with me. I'd like to see this meeting happen. And who I need to kind of make sure is on board with that and just kind of bring some issues together. So Mary Ann, are you a good maybe contact to help me actually get this to happen or?
Just, just give Chief, give Chief Jenkins a call over there. You know Jason.
I do, I do. I understand we need to get, don't members of their, their fire board need to be on it too or?
Yeah, but I'm, I'm sure if you go through him, he'll, he'll, he'll let you know.
All right, great. Well, thank you. I'll do that.
How about the Joint City School District Subcommittee, Councilmember Cruz?
Yes, we met and we are still waiting to complete the agreement for as his officer. But other than that, everything's okay. Teachers are continuing to work with children. The lunches are being served, so there's going to be, there have been 15 applicants for superintendent position and all of them will be interviewed.
Good. What was that again? 15 applicants for what?
Superintendent.
Oh, okay. Nice, nice. Homeless Community Advisory Group, I think that's Councilmember Brigham and myself, and, and we really don't have a meeting scheduled right now. But we'll let you know as soon as we do. Council reports, anything you'd like to add? Seeing no one, legislative reports?
Mayor and council members, the, the Congress continues to discuss a proposed measure to provide fiscal support to municipalities and cities. The legislation referred to is referred to as the Heroes Act. The city mayorships have drafted a letter for signature of the mayors to go to Congress to support funding and providing funding support to the small cities. Small cities seem to have been left out in funding discussion at the federal level. And this is our continued effort to lobby for financial support from our, from our federal government. That, that letter was presented to the mayor today for a signature and I, and I did so out of recognition. I know our council supports getting as much federal funding as we can from and through the Heroes Act. So that letter will be, we'll plan to go out tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. Let's see. Status update on current emergency?
Mayor, council members, we didn't include in this, this week's agenda packet, the, kind of the normal update that we've been providing, the, the situation around the COVID-19 emergency. Obviously it's been very fluid. We are continuing to track it. It's largely being addressed through the county health department at this point and kind of transitioned out of the Sonoma County EOC. So we're not holding the daily area calls. It's really down to about one a week now. But we do continue to monitor and particularly if kind of transition to the reopening process. And that seems to change almost daily, often without any announcement from the governor or without any advance notice until the governor announces it on his daily press briefings, that there's going to be a change. Obviously, we're trying to keep track of modifications to the shelter in place order. Didn't want to point out that while the governor made a direction to move forward for phase two of our phase plan to open businesses, including salons, our health officer was a little hesitant to move forward. I think that article in the newspaper today expressing concern that we're starting to see an uptick in some of the numbers and positive cases of COVID. So it's something that we're obviously want to keep our eye on and track. And, you know, the concern, the possibility that it could be resurfaced. So it's something we're monitoring and checking. Obviously, staff continues to work diligently while city hall is closed in moving a number of important projects forward. And I'm happy to have any of our, our senior management team, you know, provide any specific updates that they'd like to offer for the council's consideration.
I've been participating in the homeless, I forget what they're calling it now, the homeless committee. And it was mentioned, Sonoma State, they did have a, we did have a brief meeting the other day. There are 67 people at Sonoma State. And so that again is available for COVID positive people who can be referred to, referred by a medical provider or vulnerable homeless people can also take advantage and get a dorm room for a specified period of time. They, if, the way it's set up in Cloverdale is that they would be referred through Reach for Home to homeless folks who need to, to go to Sonoma State. There's a lot of rules involved. So I think that's kind of hampered their ability to, to get, to get folks to go in there. And they said there was only one person from the North County, which is from Windsor to the county line, who is, is at Sonoma State.
Thank you, Kevin. David, anything else?
Yeah, I mean, one of the more active areas that, that staff continues to be involved in is on the food distribution. Continue to meet with the senior center. I really want to acknowledge Melanie Hall at the senior center and her team of volunteers. During the month of May, there were two food distribution events at, at the citrus fair. And I think, you know, serving over 100 on one particular Saturday and over 80 families the following Saturday. And most recently this weekend, the senior center partnered with Malabro, our restaurant, to provide oven ready meals to folks that were coming out to get, get tested for COVID-19. Obviously, there's a tremendous, continues to be a tremendous need in the community. And we're, we're obviously exploring avenues to continue to support food distribution in our community because we recognize how, how important it is. We try to get that information out as best we can. It again tends to be very fluid. And we, you know, try to make accommodations and address needs as they, as they arise.
Okay, thank you. Anything, anything else, Councilmember Cruz?
Yes, family meals are still being distributed on Friday mornings. And some of us are distributing them to homebound individuals. And the food bank continues to be active every Friday afternoon. So we want to make sure the community knows that. And occasionally, the Living Water Church has been providing food for people to pick up between three, between three and four, sometimes four or five. Yes, just want to make sure that people know where to go if they're in need of food.
Councilmember Bagway, did you shake your hand?
Yeah, just one announcement. Hopefully, the council will have the email and staff are welcome to come as well by, to, to attend the meeting via Zoom on Friday from 1:00 to 3:00 PM is the League of California Cities Redwood Empire Division General Membership Meeting. And the agenda is particularly packed. The, the league has really done an amazing job of providing quality content and continuing education during COVID-19. And, you know, being on the board, I'm pretty familiar with the fact that, I think the term Luddite was probably invented for the league. Previously have a history of being a really paper-based organization. And they have really innovated how they've worked and brought really, they, they just, they've brought really great content to us. And so Friday from our Redwood Division meeting for the council members, and of course, staff can attend as well. We're going to have a presentation from Gerbaks Sahoda. She is the President and CEO of the California Association for Local Economic Development, or CAL Ed. And she's going to have a lot of really great information on rural economic recovery. And I think for, you know, all of us to be on the same page on that with the most current information, it would be great if, you know, most of us could make that meeting. In addition to that, Senator McQuire, Assemblymember I D R Curry from just over the Myo Commerce from us and Assemblymember Wood will also be on the call and being able to take questions and, you know, talk about the legislation that, that they're working on. There will also be a legislative update from regarding housing and economic development from Jason Ryan. He's, if you've had a chance to hear him, he's one of the league's, well, he's a legislative director at the league. And he's just a great source for, you know, what is the current pending legislation and kind of, hopefully we'll just, he'll bring us up to speed on what we need to know now. So hopefully you'll be able to join, everybody will be able to join us. And in order to get the Zoom link, you do have to RSVP with Sarah. So hopefully, you know, do that tomorrow morning if you can make that on Friday from 1:00 to 3:00.
Well, I wish I could join you on that call. Unfortunately, you know, the standing Sonoma County Mayor's call.
It's right in the middle of the mayor's call. Right, exactly. So maybe we can come afterwards, Gus.
Well, I'm, I'm hoping I can view that on the league's page. I hope they record it.
No, it's going to, it's, it's private, so I'll see if they're going to record it and if they're, they're going to make it available for, for members. I'll, I'll make sure to ask that for you.
Thank you. Council members, is there anything else? And Councilmember Cruz, I have to tell you, I like the idea of picking up the food and delivering it to the needy's on Friday morning. I'm always concerned about the shut-ins not being able to get to the senior center. So I think it's great that you pick it up. Sean also stops by with lunches and, and he delivers those to the, to the homeless population. I've been talking with Reach for Homes and, and, and our folks along the river have been getting fed every Tuesday and Friday. I know it's not daily, but, you know, we, we try and get to them as much as we can.
You know, Mr. Mayor, it's incredible how many people don't know about some of the services. And how, you know, we, we had a person who went walking throughout one of the trailer parks and there were so many elderly people. I, I was really surprised. And so our numbers have increased for this week because of this person's outreach to the elderly that they suspected were in need, and they definitely were in need. So it's, it's touching, you know, and, and it feels good too. I appreciate the opportunity to work with Melanie Hall in this effort.
They do a good job. Thank you. Council members, any future agenda items? Seeing none, I'm going to just ask the city attorney and city manager if there's anything else before we adjourn. Okay, oh, Councilmember Cruz?
I'm sorry. I just got messages from both Emma and Ashton. They had some end of school year events and Emma was also helping her grandmother getting into FaceTime with her doctor's appointment. So they're doing a good thing. So that's their, you know, I wanted to excuse them. They, they are a great couple of kids and I look forward to celebrating their graduation.
Okay, thank you. If there's nothing else, we're going to go ahead and adjourn the meeting. The city council board adjourned the meeting to, flips for his page, will be adjourned in the meeting.
June 10.
Don't tell me I got it here. June 10. So we'll see everyone then. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody.
Irene, you can shut it down.